Are we ready to go?
I am ready.
Okay, well, we'll try and get ready too. We'd like to welcome everybody here tonight to Planning Commission. I'm Commissioner Doug Schill. And Jason's absent tonight, so we'd like to excuse him. Commissioner Tupou is also absent, so you're stuck with us four. But we can make it work. We'd like to start tonight with a prayer by Cody Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell. And then we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance by Pete Bullock. Commissioner Bullock.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we could all be here this evening. We're thankful for the wonderful circumstances we have to meet. We're grateful for the city that we have to live in and to participate in. We're grateful for those who serve our community and help make it such a great place to be. We pray at this time as we go throughout our agenda items that we can do so in an orderly fashion and take care of those things that are needing to be addressed. And again, we're grateful for all that we have, and thus we pray, do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise.
My allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everybody here and want to recognize City Councilman Brett Anderson is here. Our staff Drew and Elwyn are here. We'll hear from them. And our officer, police officer is here. We appreciate your attendance. Oh, we have our Economic Development Gal and we have Melanie?
Michelle.
Michelle, I'm sorry. Yeah, Melanie's in the other room. I'm sorry. Anyway, welcome. We'll get this started and underway, and I'm looking for an approval of the tonight's agenda.
Mr. Commissioner Bullock, I move to approve the agenda as set for the February 7th, 2024 meeting.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. One second.
Do I have a first and a second on the approval of the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm looking for an approval of the minutes for January 17th, 2024.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting, January 17th.
Mr. Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
First and second on approval of the minutes from January 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any declarations of abstentions or conflicts of tonight's meeting with anybody? Okay, we're good to go there. Item number 4A is a conditional use permit. That is let's see, C-24-01, a request for a conditional use permit for commercial development located at 580 West Telegraph Street. And I'm going to turn over to Drew for explanations.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant's requesting approval of a conditional use permit simply to give the existing building, the Discount Tire, a facelift. The new exterior finish will enhance the look of the business mainly from the Telegraph Street view, but also giving the three other views northeast and west faces as well. Just going to try to slide this through as we go. So here's the current look on the building. And then the proposal is in these views, so let me get that up and running. There are no other changes. What you see is the facelift on that front, and you can see what it's gone from. I don't know if I can somehow you can kind of get the current here on the left. This is the Telegraph Street view right here where my arrow's going. And then here's the new face. So they'll add a little bit of facade up, change out the storefront windows, give it some new color, and just give the building a little bit more modern look than than the old tired look that it's had. That was not a pun intended, tired and tires. Sorry, it just, it just happens every once in a while, right? So, so then we'll have the side, of course, here's the bays that everybody sees from the view from Sonic Drive in place. And then this is the view that hardly anybody sees. It's next to the Red Robin on that. So, and again, the back is hardly ever seen as well. But this is basically the new facelift. Staff, because any commercial building that's on our main drags, and especially if it changes its face, we've got to run that through a conditional use permit. That's why it's here before you, is just to get that on. You will tonight be making recommendation, because the City Council will see this too, because it's commercial. CUP. Just finishing up, staff's reviewed all the documentation and the new look. We're fine with the presentation of it, especially on one of our main streets there. It'll be an enhancement to the city. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend recommend approval of C-24-01, allowing for the new exterior finishes to the current existing Discount Tire store business located at 580 West Telegraph Street. And that would be on to the City Council. And that's with the findings and the conditions that you see outlined below. I'll be glad to answer any questions before you go into your public hearing, if you have any for me.
Any questions or? Okay, this is a public hearing, as I indicated, so I'd like to open up the public hearing. If there's anybody here that would like to make comments to this, please come forward and state your name. Looks pretty quiet, so I will close the public hearing. I'll turn it back to the Commissioners and see if they have any comments. Or a, a motion.
I'll make them. This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve C-24, recommend approval of C-24-01, request for conditional use permit for commercial development located at 580 West Telegraph Street with the four findings and five conditions as outlined by staff and send it to City Council.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Schill also, and I, passes unanimously, and it will move forward to the City Council. Do I say which date?
Next week on the 14th.
On the 14th.
A good Valentine's Day. Bring your date to the City Council for some good city business and.
Okay, thank you. Item number 5A is a preliminary plat for the island at Coral Canyon subdivision, located approximately Telegraph and Palm Island Drive. Coal West is the applicant. And I will turn it, what's that? Yeah, renewal, right? So I'll let Elwyn give us a fill in.
Thank you, Commissioners. On March 24th, 2021, City Council approved the pre-plat for the island at Coral Canyon subdivision. This preliminary plat has since expired. All of the conditions from the original approval have been incorporated into this plan or noted in the conditions below. The applicant is requesting approval of the pre-plat. This particular subdivision is proposing 91 units on an area covering 23.62 acres. The zoning is PCD. The surrounding zoning is PCD to the north, east, south, and west. This particular subdivision is zoned for vacation and/or short-term rental uses and has been given a density of 151 units. There will be a secondary emergency access in conjunction with the existing cart path associated with the golf course located on the northeast side of the project. The design of the secondary access will be reviewed and approved by both the Fire Department and Public Works Department. The original conditions of approval regarding the secondary access states that the secondary access will be triggered at the first certificate of occupancy of Phase 1 of the project to the north. However, Fire Chief has asked that the secondary access be installed prior to the 31st unit receiving certificate of occupancy in this development, and that's with the access road being asphalt. Condition 16 on this report has been updated to reflect these IFC requirements. Parking is adequate for the project. The parking requires 233 parking spaces. The applicant is providing 291 parking spaces, and that does not take into account the driveway parking stalls that are in conjunction with that. Parking is broken down with 109 visitor parking spaces spread across the development and 182 parking spaces in the two-car garage. Proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. And I'd like to just read the additional conditions beyond our standard 12. Condition 13 states the amenity area in Phase 1 will be completed before 33% of the units in this development receiving their certificate of occupancy and/or before the first certificate of occupancy is issued in the future development to the north. Condition 14, there will be a maximum height limitation of 25 feet for all structures within this development. Condition 15, there will be a minimum of four dumpsters, as shown in the exhibit. And the accumulation of trash in these dumpsters will be monitored by the HOA to keep trash under control. And lastly, condition 16, the secondary access will be installed prior to the 31st unit receiving certificate of occupancy. The secondary access shall be asphalt pavement and meet Fire Access Code and specification requirements approved by the Fire Department and Public Works. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also is a public hearing. Is there any comments, want to, questions?
Um, I just had a question. So this being a renewal, is there any, was there any changes to the previous approval?
There was not, no, other than that secondary access fire requirement from Fire Chief.
Okay, with that, let's open up the public comments and so the public hearing's open. Would anybody like to say anything? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back over to the Commissioners and for further comments or a motion.
Was the 25-foot height part of the city? So why are we putting that in? Why is that in here for this?
Coral Canyon has it.
But wouldn't that mean their CCNRs?
Yeah, but they just, on the original approval, folks showed up, and that's one of the things they wanted. And developer agreed that he would be fine with that. Doesn't plan on the buildings being taller than that, so. Yeah, because we can't enforce CCNRs, but that was just one of those considerations that was given back originally.
It just makes me nervous because of the other developments upon, if they want to do, I know that they don't like them, but like Burke Springs, if they have a two-story there, they're, they're going to say, well, the city did this in this place. It worries me that, I know it's not Coral Canyon, but that's, that's a problem that we always seem to have that comes up. You know, it's not the subdivision, even though it's out there. And then we're putting this into play as well. That's, that's my only worry is, we're actually saying you can't go over 25 feet when we don't have the right to, when our code says we, they can. So I, I, I think that's a, I don't think we should be putting that in there just for the reasons that it might bite us later on. That's my only opinion on it. But that's for. It's a good point. I mean, I understand. You put in there the developer. The developer has agreed, you know. I, I, I see what it is, but it's just a problem I just want to bring up to, it might, because I don't have any problems with any of it. I mean, they got the secondary access, and that was my big issue, the first, I think it was the first meeting I was in. So that's, that's my only question is, is why are we saying you can't go over 25 feet when the CCNRs and that are the ones that say, that say that, not, not the city? That's, that's my only worry.
Well, feel free as a Commissioner, you don't, you know, you can, that's just what was carried over. If you don't feel like you want to make that as one of your conditions.
I remember the, I remember the meeting, and the homeowners asked if it could be restricted to 25 feet, and the applicant came up and said, that's fine. I agree to that condition, which is why I got put in there. But, but I totally see what you're saying. I mean, we don't want to set a precedent saying, still people think that the city is the one that required that. I mean, that was something that people in the audience asked for, and he said, okay. Right, there's a better way to state that so it doesn't look like the city is requiring it? He agreed to it, but you tell me, Drew, is there a better way of stating that?
Probably not, to be perfectly honest with you. It, I mean, it can be kept very simple, but yet I could see where certain individuals might take it, you know, you know, to a higher degree.
Maybe something like, instead of saying, you know, restriction limit of only 25 feet, maybe applicant, applicant has agreed to, you know, a special height requirement of 25 feet or something.
They would just have to, what would happen in essence? The HOA would have to take them, you know, to court, like you would any other CCNR issue. I mean, that's really what the bottom line would be. This just keeps it from going, you know.
But it puts us enforcing CCNRs, basically. Because it, I, I know it's not that, but what I'm saying is, if this continues, it, in effect, makes the city enforce the CCNRs. Because when they come for a building permit, it can't be over two stories, and they have to. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking long, I'm looking long-term.
We wouldn't be, I wouldn't look at us enforcing their CCNRs. It's just that it was asked to be put on, they agreed to it, we put the limitation on as a condition of approval, you know? And I'd keep it as simple as that, is what it is.
So can we, can we reword it, like in our motion?
As a condition?
Yeah. As a condition, just to change, change that to, like you said, Corey, I think you said, oh, well, the developer has agreed to.
I'd rather list it as a, almost like a developer requested special height requirement or something, as opposed to the city imposing it. I don't know.
If you want to throw in there as this word to just say, as agreed to, you know, you just say, the height limit will be this, as agreed to by the applicant.
A special high restriction per the, per the applicant.
On the original approval? You could, you know, if that's so you feel more comfortable, I think that could be easily.
But I agree, I can see how this one can totally set a precedent where people are like, well, that's, it's only, you know, they're restricted 25 feet here, why do they go 35 feet over here?
And it couldn't happen in Coral Canyon.
I don't want to like completely like throw out that agreement that he had with the homeowners, but I also don't want to set a precedent either.
I agree.
I mean, it's okay to leave it in. I'm just making a note so that if it ever comes up again, this isn't there. And maybe City Council should look at it as far as, when it gets to them, to be saying, I mean, this was in the previous one, correct, Drew? This waiver was in the one that was originally approved? Okay, and I just, I just look at it kind of like the stop signs on the other road, but we shouldn't be involved, but it was put into this. So then it has to, if it ever needs to change, it has to come back through all of this to change, rather than just changing their CCNRs. But, well, I mean, it's, it's fine to leave it on.
And I think we're okay.
I don't have a problem leaving it on, I'm just saying it's.
Well, edit, edit that a little bit and make a motion.
I'm fine with it the way it is. I'm just saying, I just, my voice has been heard, I just want to. We can take it out and leave it up to him to honor his agreement, but I can see angry people. We take it out and then they build 35-foot buildings. Yeah, I know, I, I agree with that 100%. I, I understand what they want there and all of that, and I'm 100% fine with it. With leaving it in here on this, I just, it's not something I like to see, but, and I'm fine with it. I just wanted to bring it up. I'm fine with it for this one, but.
I think we're okay to modify it. Just modify it to the.
However you want. I just wanted to, I didn't mean to stir the pot so much. That's a good question.
I think it's a good point.
What if anybody here, anybody here in the audience have an opinion?
There's nobody here.
We have a couple Coral Canyon people here.
I'm really disappointed that we don't have more here in Chamber. We always do with Coral Canyon, so. Well, I would say make a, make a motion.
Hey, somebody's got, we've got somebody wants to speak. Seriously, if anybody here hasn't, I mean, this is a good point, if anybody has an opinion on this.
I'll open it up.
I'd love to hear it.
Public hearing is reopened. How's that?
Come on Brett, what's your, what's your opinion?
Jack Evans with Coal West. I would just say we don't plan to build anything 25, higher than 25 feet. And we're adhering to the CCNR, so it's up to your discretion, how you want to handle it, so.
So maybe we take it out and just go on that? I don't know. I don't like leaving it, but.
Yeah, I would too. Uh-oh, I haven't closed it.
Close, close.
Dick Saunders, I reside at Coral Canyon. As I recall, when this was originally approved, this was part of Coral Canyon's overall community. Since then, I believe that this is now Coal West property itself, it's been de-annexed from our CCNRs. But you are correct, when it originally came up for approval, there was a lot of homeowners that wanted it to comply to a limited height. Specifically, I think the people that lived along the golf course, that were looking up at these, they were worried that they were going to tower above. And as you know, the rest of Coral Canyon is all single floor. This is unique. But I think it was kind of a compromise, is what I'm saying. But I would recommend, if you want to do anything to avoid setting a precedent, do as what Corey suggested, saying that this is agreed to for this project. I wouldn't certainly take it out of the conditions of what everybody was good with. I mean, why swat the beehive if you don't need to? But that's my opinion.
It is just a condition for this one. I mean, I understand, I understand that, you know, I mean, it is what it is, and it's, it says the same thing. Why don't we just change the language on that condition to make sure it's just very explicit that, you know, this is a special condition, you know, as agreed to and, you know, per, per the applicant, just something like that, you know, special height restriction per the applicant. All right, let's try it.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing once again.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the island at Coral Canyon subdivision, located approximately Telegraph and Palm Island Drive with the two findings and 16 conditions as outlined by staff with a, which one is it? With a modification of condition 14, wherein it says that the 25-foot height restriction for all structures is a special, special condition per the applicant. And then send this to City Council for consideration. Mr. Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Schill, I'm an, I also, this passes with, with that correction, and we'll send that to the City Council on Valentine's Day. Okay, 6A. This is an amended preliminary plat approval for Standing Rock East at Long Valley subdivision, located at Staircase Way and Hidden Passage Cove. The applicant's D.R. Horton. Owner is D.R. Horton. Engineering is American Consulting and Engineering. Eldon will give us a preview.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval to amend the previously approved preliminary plat for Standing Rock East at Long Valley. Washington City previously approved the preliminary plat on July 14th of 2021. The applicant is asking to make a few changes to Phases 3, 4, and 5 to better accommodate the current market demands. Those changes include reducing the roadway bend at the north end of Sina Wava Drive near Lot 4123, reducing the roadway bend on Finn's Road near Lot 4112, slight changes to a variety of lot sizes. Overall unit count increased from 191 to 194. However, the total density requirements of the PCD, which were 2361, remains the same, so they're just increasing a few units in this development. And then added visitor parking stalls in Phases 3 and 5. The rest of staff report stays the same. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the amended Standing Rock East at Long Valley subdivision. And that's on to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following standard conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
We added some additional parking stalls, right?
Yes, sir.
And we're adding three more lots, correct?
Correct, yeah. I'll step away from the mic, I can show you where the biggest change came from.
Yeah, it is a better idea. Actually safer on that road rather than turning in on a curve, I guess. Any other comments? Thanks, Eldon. This is a public hearing, I'll open up for public comments. Don't, don't be last. Okay, I'll close the public comment, the public hearing, and turn it back over to commission for further questions, comments, or a motion.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I have a question for the applicant. Don?
Don?
I have a question for you.
Step up.
Don being with DR Horton, yes, sir.
Question for you, so I know, I know we added some lots because of changing in the road and stuff, where it says that, it says a, what a variety of phases, or a variety, or slight changes to a variety of lot sizes, which, which lots changed and by how much?
Several of them throughout the development changed. We were building Rambler's on all of those lots, but the market had, as we had sold some of them, and we had sold some of our cottage lots, and we found that our cottage lots were, were in more demand, so we wanted to produce more cottage lots, and we transferred the dimensions of the cottage lots throughout this development.
So just a few narrower lots?
So it's a different product type.
Are they the more narrower ones then? What, what size are the lots on, like for the cottage ones versus the Rambler?
You know, I'll have to maybe turn to Adam off for that, I can't remember what the dimensions were, what, how much we changed.
I saw a head shake back there.
Adam Allen with American Consulting and Engineering. So the lots are a little bit skinnier, the lots for the cottages are about 10 foot skinnier than the ones that they do for the Rambler's. And so I believe these, I think that there is another sheet that shows the dimensions on them, but I think they're 50 feet wide by anywhere from 90 to 100 feet deep. Just kind of depending on where they're at, oh, 40, 45 feet is the minimum width on a cottage sized lot. So that, that, that kind of accounts for their little two-story houses that they're building out there. So that's kind of where some of the density gain came in as well. Was just changing some overall sizing, just kind of some layout tweaks and things that went throughout the whole thing.
Thank you. Do I, did I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, anything else?
Go for it.
I'll do it. All right, this is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve and send to city council the preliminary plat for Standing Rock East at Long Valley subdivision located at staircase way and hidden passage cove with the two findings and 12 conditions.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, a second by Bullock. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
I'm Shil, I'm also an aye. This will pass forward to the city council on Valentine's Day. Okay, the next item is number 7A, which is a public hearing also. And this is for consideration, a recommendation to the city council for Desert Flower Phase 2 amended final plat located at approximately Desert Cactus and Bella Vista Drive. The applicant is James Jessup, owner is Desert Flower Development, and we'll turn it over to Eldon for comments.
Thanks commissioners, the applicant is requesting approval to amend this final plat. The reason for this amendment is to eliminate the limited common area from lots 41 through 48 and turn this area into private ownership. No other changes are being made at this time. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the PUD zoning of this development. The subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of the Desert Flower Phase 2 amended subdivision on to the city council based on the following original findings and original conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Eldon, this is Commissioner Anderson, where, so where was the limited common that, on this that's being converted?
These originally came in as pad lots, if you remember, can't remember if it was last meeting or the week.
So this drawing just, it just took out the differentiation, just says they're now regular lots?
If you remember Riverbend, they pulled the common area out to meet the minimum square footage requirement to do an internal accessory dwelling. This is the same motivation behind that, to meet that 6,000 square foot lot size.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so let me open up the public hearing if there's any questions or comments from the public, or come on up and state your name and we'd like to give you the floor.
Hi, I'm Molly Francis. I don't like mics, I'm really sorry, this freaks me out. I live in Desert Flower, and I tried to come to the last meeting for like the final plat to have this accepted, but my son was sick, so I couldn't come. And our biggest thing in this is, one of the fine print is that once it is finalized, the streets and the drainage system gets handed over to the homeowners, because it's private roads. Since I moved in, we have had drainage issues. They put on Desert Segoro, which is the first street in, they have two drains. And then down lower, because it's a decline into the neighborhood as you go in, Desert Sage has no drains. And my house just happens to be the one that all of the water pulls in front of. And there's no drains on, like, there's a dead end road for Desert Flower Lane, or Road, I don't know, Desert Flower. And then the road that they're addressing here, the Desert Cactus, there is one drain down at the bottom. And so, and I, I printed pictures if you wanted to see our drainage, I don't. But, and I had made a comment when I couldn't attend the last one, and it kind of spiraled into the retirement community down below and all of their drainage questions and issues and stuff, so I feel like it just kind of glazed over the Desert Sage Lane and kind of went, kind of rotated into the retirement communities' issues. And so just my request would be like, I don't, I don't know what city, I don't know what the logistics are, whatever, but just being able to like, put a drain somewhere. My house is the third one in, next to the red, in the one over from the red car. And that is where, like right now, there's been a good five inch deep puddle just sitting, because it's been raining, and that's like the lowest it's been.
So you see your house in a relationship with the red car?
It's the third car in on that side, like, so the red car's not my, yep.
Okay, right there.
That's my house. And I had reached out previously through the builder's website, because owners have like, their warranty was run through there, so originally I was going through that saying, hey, like, what can be done, is there anything we can do? And they were unresponsive, so then I started reaching out, I don't know who I talked to, I'm really sorry, but I talked to him on the phone once, and he did mention, like, they're private roads, right? And our HOA president couldn't be here tonight, he's in Disneyland with his, for his daughter's birthday, but he has, he's okayed me to say that our HOA is, this is a big, big concern for them too, because if it keeps up, like, water and sitting and just pooling like that, like, it's not great. And he's concerned that if something happens, if something comes up, the homeowners are going to have to foot the bill, and the HOA is going to have to foot the bill when there should have just been a drain put in on the street. I don't know how building works, so I'm really sorry. And I know they, I'm sure they did like a drainage assessment, things like that, but I just feel like common sense is when you're going further down, that's where water tends to go, so there should have been something.
Yeah. That's right. Almost needs a drain down there to push it away, but. Is there any retention on this, this new, all the drains to that same, same location, same street?
This is Commissioner Anderson, can I, could I ask the applicant some questions here to get her some answers?
You can, yeah.
Can you go back to that last?
James Jessup, I'm the applicant.
So a question for you. Which way does the storm drain go?
So it flows down Desert Segoro Lane, and there's two boxes right at the end of Desert Cactus Drive.
Does it go north or does it come south?
South.
So it comes down to Desert Cactus?
Right.
Where, where are the storm drains at?
They're at the bottom of Desert Cactus Drive, right at the very end. So we have two basins at the top of the front of the subdivision of Desert Cactus, and then two at the bottom. The person that was just up here, where does she live in, in this? Looks like lot 14 is that?
So where, so does it drain here and go into the basin?
Yes, yep, it drains down that curb and down that way.
So where's the, in relation to here, where's the drainage?
Goes straight to the end of Desert Cactus Drive toward the drainage basin, right there, that's, that's the basin.
There might be one there, I couldn't see, but it's right there, and then the other two are at the front house right there. You can see them kind of fill the black hole.
So it's got a, it has the gravity drain down this street and around the corner to here, right?
Right, that is the way it was designed. Well, but the pictures we saw showed standing water here.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's designed to flow despite by gravity and around the corner.
There's nothing down here, or there's a pool here.
Pool is where the.
That's what I'm saying, it's designed to gravity flow.
Correct.
Right.
Do you know?
I haven't noticed that.
Is there enough slope there, or is it just a low spot in the asphalt?
It, it may be, I'll have to go look at that.
Have you seen some of these pictures?
I, I was texting Brett and the other guys to, have you heard?
Yeah, James.
It looks like maybe there's a low spot in the asphalt or something, it's just sitting there, it's not going anywhere.
It, it is a pretty flat graded road, this is showing quite a bit of rain coming down right when it is. But we'd be happy to go over and look at it and see if there's something we can do. If it drains though eventually, I mean, that's what it's designed to do, is just drain out. If we add dry roads on both sides and there's a puddle there, then we'll take a look at that and see what we need to do.
There is a picture in there where it's dried up a little bit, with still showing the standing water.
It just looks like a low spot.
Okay. I guess the, my question is, I see this as a valid concern, it's just how like this development is going to eventually push more water that way, but I don't know that, can you put the responsibility all back on this new development to try to contain water on the other side of the street?
It should actually direct water away from the development having these houses. The drainage ditch on the top of the wall cuts everything off and drains it right down to the pond now.
So these shouldn't drain onto here, but.
Drain it all onto Desert.
But she has a good point that, I mean, over time, you know, the asphalt is going to get dips and sinks, and you'll get low spots forever, but.
We'd be happy to look at it and see what is going on with it.
Especially with it being such a minimal grade, I mean.
Maybe that's what it is.
Because maybe it's a low spot and you can add a little asphalt, but if it's not that, if it's just slightly low there, I mean, there's not a whole lot of fix other than putting in a storm drain pipe under the street that goes down to Desert Cactus.
Right.
But it, I don't know. I, I totally understand her, her concern though, too.
Well, it's, it's a pretty new development, but.
But, but she, she's right, and once it gets turned over to the HOA, it becomes an HOA problem, and if, you know, if it's low asphalt, you put asphalt in it, but if it's, if it's something that should have had a storm drain in, catch basin, then that's, that's a lot more of an issue to try and fix.
Can I ask this question? So is there a potential of this water? Is supposed to crown like in that road, like, does this water go this way or will it drain over today?
It should, because everything north is higher. Yeah, I don't, it shouldn't go north.
Yeah, this development won't be putting any more water right there.
It should go down the street.
This is the first time I've heard of it, so I'll be going and looking at it here tonight.
John, I have a question. Can I put you on the stand?
Hop and add it.
So, so question, in looking at this, I mean, I know it's not technically part of this that we're talking about here tonight, but, but in looking at that, I mean, was there sufficient, I guess you don't probably don't have the, the info right now, but I mean, is there sufficient flow, or was there supposed to have been sufficient flow that we don't have standing water there, or should it have had a catch basin in there somewhere?
I mean, it should have met minimum requirements for slope on the street and stuff. I mean, more likely, yes, they've had some settlement issue there. I haven't looked at the pictures, but more likely it's a settlement issue where you have a low spot that's in there, you could go in depending on what it is and, and make a fix, instead of having to go in and put a storm drain inlet in. Because ultimately, even if you have that low spot, you can put a storm drain inlet in there.
Right, it still might just sit, sit there.
Yep. So originally, yes, it was, it probably drained just fine and stuff, you've got some settlement, and now it's.
So I, I just want to make sure for her sake that, and for other people living right there, that, that, that at least it got put in with what was approved, you know, with the correct amount of slope, and that if it is put incorrectly, that, and it's settled or whatever, that at least she can talk to whoever, and so that would, I guess that would be my recommendation then is, I mean, Public Works can check, you, you can talk to him and the developer, and they can make sure it was put in the way it was supposed to flow, and if it is, then, you know, the easy fix hopefully is there's a little bit of asphalt that's settled that's a maintenance issue that might be ongoing. And if, if there is a dip in the road, then that's something that, you know, Public Works can work out with, with you guys. That's my recommendation for you.
Oh, you really can't put any meat in it to take care of that.
But I, I would just recommend you work with the developer and Public Works over here, maybe talk to both of them.
How old is your house? Well, we, we would appreciate if you would reach out to her too, that'd be nice.
John, can you just coordinate with them, make sure that we're all good? Thanks. I guess I do have one other question for you though, James. Can you go back to that, the Google photo, the Google Maps? Just because this was a condition of this getting approved, just the, what is it? Did this ever get, did this right here ever get either, either a settlement, or what do we say, either entered or wrapped or, or, I just said it or whatever?
We, we ended up doing the straw waddles across that. We, we ended up doing the straw waddles across that end and then further down, we dug it back as far as we dared. It'll, it's to where we can now maintain it fairly easy with a skid steer and graded it away from all that, that wall and graded it down to the Beehive grave down below. Any more than that, you've got a sewer line and a city maintenance road right there that we need to maintain. So we've cleaned up that whole area to where I think it drains well and, and it still maintains the city's maintenance.
Did the dirt get covered with any erosion controlers in the straw waddles? I mean, any rock or hydroseed or anything?
No, on that part, no. I don't know though, there, there's not a lot of sediment. I mean, the, it's been there for two years, three years now.
Yeah, it's just, it's just bare dirt as all, I'm just saying so.
It is.
Just something to keep it from sloughing off in a big rainstorm. That's, the only reason I bring it up is just cause that was a, a point of, of approval we had originally on this project and it was supposed to get sediment control.
We did quite a bit. I mean, we put a significant investment going down where it was really bad up against the wall. Really, the only other fix is that whole block wall needs ripped out and built the way it should've been built.
And I've looked at it, it's pretty bad.
Previous developer just kinda dug it out and then just put a privacy wall right there. Um, so we've cut everything back as much as we dare. And then the straw waddles have really held the water back going down that hillside. There's three, three waddles on this side and then two waddles going up toward the end of it.
Have the homeowners, have, have any of them removed their, their downspouts that's draining into that?
Most of them, there's yard drains on the lower end that are popping out. They actually went under the wall and, and popped out there. I don't know any other way that they could deal with it other than doing storm drain into their subdivision, so I don't see that it's really causing anybody a lot of, of issues and we'll just see how that kinda maintains.
I just wanna make sure as part of approval, just that we...
Kinda clean that up.
Just enforce, cause that was a requirement of this, so...
It was. Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time down that edge, digging that out. That was a, that was a pretty interesting job to get off of that edge and dig right up against those block walls and dig it wide enough that you could get a skid steer in and out of there to maintain that.
Okay, thanks. John, have you, you guys or anyone in Public Works like been up there to make sure it, it's okay?
Yeah, we've got, we've completed this out there, still working with the other development to deal with their sprinkler system that was found out there outside the wall and causing a lot of issues and all that stuff.
And, and we don't know what else to do other than leave, let them leave it there for now. Um, otherwise they're gonna have to go inside the subdivision and tear up. So it's, it's kinda been a, okay, what works for you guys and what works for us and, you know, it, uh, the ultimate way to do it is really that privacy wall just needs to be a, a concrete retaining wall. That'd be the right way.
Well, it needs to be retaining while it comes up so it doesn't...
Yeah, there's a few houses down there that have, it looks like they've ripped that out and put an eight inch block wall in there and they, they hold up really well.
Okay, thanks.
Whoops, did you hear me? Okay, I'll start over. We'll close the public hearing and we'll go back to the commissioners for additional comments, questions, or a motion. Thank you.
So Corey, do you feel, I guess I, I'm not familiar with those conditions that you were talking about. I'm not sure if I, this might've been before my time, but are you worried about that road control?
They've got their storm basin and then there's kinda like a little maintenance road on top of it. And then from there, it, it drops down like eight or 10 feet or something to the community below it. And that was there predating, you know, his project. He sort of inherited it and it's kind of a, a city, there's like a city utility line that runs through there underneath that road, so it's not like you can lower the level or anything. It was kinda one of those things that way back when should've had a retaining wall there between them and the neighboring community, but it doesn't and it's not really anybody's particular fault, but the, the community there, they were, they were running all their downspouts and gutters off their roof into there and, and putting a little bunch of water in there. And then like he said, there was just a privacy wall built down there that's rotted and the road and it's got holes under it and everything. So they were all concerned that you were gonna have mud sloughing off going in when it rained or whatever. So part of the approval for this is we said it needs to have some storm water, you know, prevention and, and that sort of thing. So he's gone in and cut it back, made it bigger so you can get in there and maintain it and kinda keep it clean and put some straw waddles and it sounds like they've removed a bunch of their gutters and which should help. I mean, still not the perfect solution, but again, it's not really anybody's fault that you can pin on everybody and say you gotta do this, I mean...
Well, and they have an understanding.
Yeah. Anyway, that's kinda the, the history of that.
Onward and upward.
There's nothing we can do about that other one, is there?
I would say that too, like, yeah.
Right.
I feel like she has a valid concern, but I feel like the water that's coming off of this, based on what I'm being told, the crown of the road, the water's gonna, it's not going over the, it hasn't a bigger issue.
I would, just for the sake of community relations, especially where you're in there a bunch, I mean, I would really see what you can do to help with that, so...
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a motion to approve the final plat. Wait, sorry, wrong one. Seven A. Amended to approve the amended final plat for Desert Flower Phase Two subdivision located at Desert Cactus Drive and Bella Vista Drive with the two findings and five conditions and send it on to City Council.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
So I got a motion by Commissioner Bullock, a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual, Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Sheil, I'm an aye. This will pass and move forward to the City Council for their review on Valentine's Day. We got a really nice Valentine's Day coming up.
We, we really should not do those subdivisions with the common area in the front yard. The, the common area that we got rid of is the same thing we had for SNS last week, basically, or, right? I mean, the common area was the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, I, we gave them those options, but they left and just only did part of it to get the minimum and keep the rest of it in there. I think they were just trying not to disturb a lot and have them be so isolated lots compared to all the other ones that weren't. This one, they're gonna do just all of them. That's what I tried to tell those guys to do, but I get why they just only did the minimum they needed.
I just, I just, I feel like it's kind of a dumb way to get the stuff that, that they want for the square footage. I, I don't... No, no, it is and I, I, I think, I think the limited comment is just make it, yeah, I don't understand why.
Problematic.
Huh?
It's just problematic.
I don't know why we keep letting it go through. I think we should find some way to change that. Cause if your common area, it should be common for everyone, not just on your front door. And it's, it's a way to, it's a way to get open space. I think, I, I... I think it's a shady way to get open space and I, I don't like it, so... I, well, it's, it's shady, it's a shady way to get open space.
Moving on, right? Okay, seven B. This seven B is a public hearing also for everybody that wants to get up. As for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Star Springs Phase Three Partially amended final plat located approximately Lost Spring Drive and Wooden Shoe Drive. The applicant's D.R. Horton. They're the owner, land, American Land Consulting's engineer. Eldon will give us a preview.
Thanks, Commissioners. The reason for this amendment is to extend the backyard area of lots 28 through 44 and 55 through 62. They're going to extend those lots 20 feet and turn this area into private ownership. So just gonna extend that backyard 20 feet. And the reason for this is those roadways were originally platted with double the landscape strip. So kind of an error on the, on the first go around. They've caught that since and we're amending this plat. So the landscaping, the required 20-foot landscape strip is going to stay. The excess 20-foot landscape strip is going to be removed and turned into individual lot ownership.
So was it an error or a, a selling point?
Oh, I, I'm not the one to determine if it was an error or not. Uh, we're here to make it right according to their current standards.
I'm just saying what came to my mind.
So staff has reviewed this proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the PCB zoning of this development. The subdivision also remains in compliance with the ordinance of the city. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of the Star Springs at Long Valley Phase Three Partial Amendment and that's on to the City Council based on the following findings and original conditions in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Open, it's all, it's all me. Uh, any comments? We wanna open up the public comments, so I would invite anybody to come up and, and make some comments. It's open. Okay, I'll close the public comments. Public hearing is closed and I'll go back to the Commissioners for their questions, comments, or a motion. Do, do I need to strike what I said?
This is Commissioner Anderson. I make a motion to approve the final plat, or sorry, wrong one. One minute. Is that it? Yeah. Final plat approval for Star Springs at Long Valley Phase Three Partial Amendment located at Lost Spring Drive and Wooden Shoe Drive with the two findings and five conditions as outlined by staff and sent it to, sent it to City Council for consideration.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll second.
So I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Bullock. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Sheil, I'm also an aye. Uh, this seven B passes and will go to City Council on Valentine's Day. Okay, the next few items, you know, can I, can I just take a break for a minute? So, we're gonna take a, a three-minute break. I get a bonus if we get out by 7:30. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate that break. Uh, we're gonna move forward. Are you okay, Melanie?
Yep.
Okay, onward, here we go. Uh, this, the next few items are code amendments and it, we have a public hearing also. Uh, so this first one is item 8A. It's a public hearing for consideration or recommendation to the City Council for a code amendment of Title X subdivision regulations. And I'm going to, do I turn that over to you? What do I do?
Yep, just turn it over to me.
It's all you.
All right. If you're wondering why we're doing this, well, I'll just read to you. Well, somebody switched that over. So I'll just give you, the, the city's wishing to amend their code. They're not wishing to, they're being kind of forced to, uh, by the lovely folks that are in session right now. They passed a law last year that, um, changed up subdivision regulations throughout the state of Utah. They basically said that city councils will not be in the subdivision... They basically said that city councils will not be in the subdivision process themselves anymore. And cities can then come up with a land use authority and do subdivisions the way they, you know, whatever they need to do, but, so this proposal is just trying to meet that, that new revised statute by the state of Utah. So in essence, where a subdivision used to go, staff would look it over, we'd take it to you folks for a preliminary or a minor, you would make a recommendation onto the city council, they would vote on it, approve it, accept the streets. That process now, the backend of that's gone. So your land use authority and, and a city could make the choice, they could just say we're going to have staff, and there are some cities who just have staffs take care of all their subdivisions. There are other cities that say, well, we're going to have our planning commission, but they kind of, they kind of gave a little bit of recommendation when they state did it, says you probably ought to create a land use authority body. It can be your planning commission, but give them the title of a land use for subdivision. So that's the choice that, that the council chose at the time when this came out. The mayor gave the directive to go. Again, a lot of cities are really not happy with this. As most you know, I sit on a city council and the people I work with where I live and on that council, they're not happy with it. Councils aren't, and so, but it is what it is. We are proposing this new subdivision ordnancy now. The things that are changing are the things in red. As you see, you also notice as if you read through it, there's a lot of strikeouts because we're just eliminating those things that do not apply at that particular stage of the subdivision anymore. So I'm going to try to get through it quickly. I, I hope you had a chance to read it if you have any questions, but just for folks here to see, again, speaking of a, you know, first definition. So instead of saying city council, because they're not in that, we just dropped the council and just said adopted by the city. That could be any part, because as you read through this, there's different people that are in the process depending on where the stage or what the plat is, right? So instead of trying to lay them all out, we're just change some of these to just simply say city. Now, the other thing that the state did that not anybody's happy with at all is there now time limits. There's a shot clock, as we call it. That's not what the state called it, but in essence, that's what it is. You have X amount of time to get that thing reviewed, and then it has to go on a meeting. A preliminary plat has 15 business days to be reviewed by staff before, you know, it can be put on a meeting. That wasn't the wisest thing, because then the state came and gave 20 days for a final plat. And anybody in the subdivision knows, subdivision business knows, takes more time to review and go through a preliminary plat, that's where all the vesting happenings. Final plats are just to watch to make sure that it meets what the approved preliminary plat was. So they got that backwards in, in one thing. Hopefully, they're listening up there right now, and these are going through things and take some of that wisdom. But with that, we don't have to start the shot clock unless they have, as the state put it, a complete application. So over the years, we found that they would just bring in sometimes bits and pieces, right? Well, now, because we are on a shot clock, you have to turn in a complete application with all the required documentation with it. And so then, when you do do that, and then you click to submit, that's when the days start. So that we, we're going to make sure that they have all the stuff that we'll follow here, that they have to have in that application. So we wanted to define what a complete application was, because that's what kicks in, the shot clock. This is a new term in our subdivision and many others. The land use authority for the purpose of this title, Title X, the planning commission will be charged with being the land use authority. That's you good folks right there. You'll find out, you have a lot more weight in subdivisions now. So be prepared for that, if the council passes the ordinance, right? Here's the, some new definitions, reviewing bodies. For subdivisions of two units or less on an individual parcel, which is 98% of the ones we look at, the reviewing body will be the land authority and then the community development director. Then the state did leave, city councils aren't totally bumped out of these. There are certain subdivisions that would have three units or more per individual parcel. The reviewing body will then be the planning commission as a recommendation body, then the city council will be that of the approving on the preliminary plat, and then it goes to the community development director, as you'll find later on, for the final plat process. Any questions so far? That's pretty much out of the definitions, but that's kind of the meat of the changes that we're going to, that drive the rest of, of what's going to be, you're going to be having here. So, um, chapter two, I think there was a strikeout or two. Chapter three is where all the changes really take place.
So the planning commission is the land use authority?
Is going to be designated a land use authority, okay? And so you'll see how, how this, this all comes about. So plats is where the biggest things, you know, came about. A lot of this, I'm just going to put in this whole title, instead of trying to do, well, we're going to change this and this and this and this, I'm just proposing to the council, I want you guys to give your recommendation that we just get rid of the standing verbiage right now and just bring this whole thing, which is, 70% of this is already what we have in place. It's just easier for a swap of one versus the other. Okay, so you can see where the strikeouts are, because at one time, you guys were just a recommendation, right? So now this, this goes to you, and you will be approving preliminary plats, period. Once you approve them, then they go into construction drawings, then they can file for final plats, et cetera. But the buck will stop with you on you're going to be giving the vesting rights if this is passed by city council. Okay, if it's approved. Yes. Yeah, well, it's not even due plat, it's just if, it's single family, and it can be up to two units on it, on a lot. So you could have some twin homes that are on one lot, right? That means they're going to be owned by one person, rented out or something. Now, if I, if I have, I don't know if many of you know, the Hoops made a project down in the fields by the Andresses. They made a subdivision and they had four units on one lot. Okay? That would have went to the city council, because there were three or more on an individual lot. It's the only one I know of in our whole city that we've done. All the other ones, even these townhome projects, they're all on individual lots, because they're privately owned each one, with zero property lines. Or a fourplex, or, or whatever, yeah. So those are rare. They're very rare, but the state legislator said, we'll let the city council still go through those, because there's a little bit more in those. You're talking higher densities, et cetera, so I think they did have some wisdom when they kept that to stay with the city council. But 98% of all subdivisions are going to be falling under what we normally do, and then you'll be the, the approving body on the preliminary plats and the minor. If it's a minor subdivision, which is nine lots or less, right? Then you guys will be that, that approving body on that. Sorry, turn your mic on. Who's the community development director? That's me. Yeah, they needed to have somebody. It runs through our office anyway, so we decided, we see them all the time, we're involved in them, so we're just proposing it be the community, on a final plat again. What I'm looking at, I'm going to pull up the preliminary plat. If that final plat comes in and looks like it's supposed to, it should be, and it always has been, I've always agreed that if they bring in, they, they're approved on a plat, it's exactly like it was on the preliminary plat. It, it by law should be approved, because you've already basically granted them that, they didn't make any changes, so that's why we're keeping it simple. So now, if somebody came in and had modifications to it that were different than what the preliminary plat, then that's where I'd step and say, ah, this is too much, I'm going to deny this. You need to go back, get your preliminary plat amended to what this looks like, and then we'll get you your final plat, just so you understand that process.
Commissioner, I have a question. So I know the intent of this, but I'm just reading this, just for clarification. So the city council is still supposed to be the final body for multifamily, correct?
Zoning.
But I don't see it in there.
Well, multifamily, multifamily isn't subdivided. It's technically not subdivided, like apartment complexes, they're owned by one entity.
No, I, I'm just saying like, like townhomes, for example, but technically, a townhome is one unit per parcel, because each one is part of the street.
That's right, that comes to you guys.
Or still us, okay.
It would only be like that project I explained with the Hoops where they had.
We're talking city councils, just for commercials stuff, basically.
Well, if they're, if someone, if someone wanted to make a subdivision of fourplexes, and each fourplex was a lot, because they were going to own them and rent them all out.
Other than that, it's.
Council would see it.
Commercial and apartments and things like that.
Yeah. And again, apartments are generally one, one piece of land.
Right.
Owned by a corporation or an individual, that they rent all the rooms out, there is no subdividing, so they wouldn't come to you anyway. Does that make sense? So, but if they did broke, break it up into different, even say, there were four owners of 160 units, and they all wanted to own 40 each, and so divide it out, then that would go to the city council, because there would be 40 units per each one of those parcels. So, okay? So again, all these changes are just kind of striking out the way it used to be, where it went to planning commission for recommendations, city council for approval. You can see all the strikeouts on the red is, it's just the land use authority, land authority, land use authority for all the preliminary plat process. You can see there's a lot of strikeouts, because again, that's how it used to be. Okay? And all this first part does is tell people the process that you go through. You come in, you file your application with, with the community development department, they then disperse it to all the people that look at it, they all go through the review, then it gets put on a meeting, then you folks will make the decision on, with a public hearing, on a preliminary plat, and a minor plat of nine units or less. Okay, so again, a lot of this red that you see is just calling out community development director on the final side of it, you folks as the other part, and then just where we, we just stroke, struck out some stuff that we use, because we used to send out our plats to a third-party engineer, you know, to review. Now we have our own engineer, we don't need to do that. So I, you can see like on this one, number 11, once the third party, I struck that out and just put city engineer. So those are just minor tweaks for what we do now. Okay, what I wanted to point out, so here's, here's now the new process by state law. You can see this 1033B1, there's a lot of strikeout on it, because here it is, at least 15 business days prior to the date of the reviewing body meeting, at which the preliminary plat is to be considered, the subdivider will turn in a complete application. So that just says what they have to have in place now. And then we have, so we went through, and what we really felt was, so significantly, we wanted to make sure that our checklist was as complete and had everything that we require for a preliminary plat on that checklist. And they've got to make sure that all that information is in. If they don't have that in there, it's not a complete application. So we won't accept it until they hit. So all these things, you know, from A, these are things that we kind of already had, but we updated it a little bit, but this is going to be the crux of all of what we need, and so all this information needs to be on that, on that preliminary plat. And it goes all the way down to Y. One more, we would have made it all the way through the alphabet, but we couldn't think of one more to do. We'll be stuck with 25 required items. D used to be C, it just got moved to a new letter. Fees have to be paid. So now we just get into the review of the preliminary plat, after the complete application, here's the process you go through. If they had, we, we're limited to four review cycles, that's what the state put on there. So if someone brings in an application, they say they met all the requirements and, you know, that I just went through A through Y, but there were some things that were saying, well, you, you didn't use the right code reference here, and you made the pipe too small, or the road doesn't meet, you know, you need to fix this. It's the red line process. Most of you understand the red line. We only get four, four cracks at that. Okay? So what happens if they still don't follow up and meet it, and meet the, the standards of it? After the four, we have to send it through, but it doesn't mean that we can't throw on a recommendation of denial. And you as the, then the planning commission say, well, you guys aren't meeting everything that's required, and they're going to say, well, the reason we don't is because this, this, and this. Well, either you can agree with them and then pass it, or you're going to say, no, that's fishy. We're going to take the recommendation to staff and deny your, your preliminary plat, because you're not meeting our minimum standard.
On average, what would you say the current rate is? How many times?
John, you're the one with the bleeding pen mostly. I mean, but most people are actually getting them done in like three, two or three red lines, right? Eldon?
Two of them.
Yeah, we don't really have problems with it, but I know other places, you know, every once in a while, you're going to get one of those, and I'll say, and John and Eldon both know what I mean, sometimes we've been at six or seven, when we've been in our old process, because they're just, they'll, you give them a list of 10 things, they fix six of them, send it back to you. Then they fix two more, and then they send it back to you. And then they fix one more and send it back to you, and then they fix the final one, you know, I mean, we've had a few, not, that's not common. You know, that is the exception, but it does happen every once in a while.
Is there some protection there, that developers can't do that? Like.
No, there isn't.
Intentionally ignore.
If, again, if they do, then again, and this is what we told them, we've tried to work with them, you know, for the most part, we always have. What this is going to do, once the four cycles are, are done, then staff will not have any other choice but to recommend denial based on, you're not meeting, you know, item S, item G, and Y. And, and that has to be there because of this, this, and this. So then you guys just have, well, hey, we tried to work with you, these are important to us, and here's why, and we'll recommend denial based on, you do need to have S and G and Y taken care of for us to give you an approval.
And then they'll have to start the process all over again.
That's right. That's why I'm not real happy, they think that, you know, lots of people think this might have been a victory, but I think it's going to end up hurting a lot, there's going to be a lot more denials, you know, where cities could have worked more, and I'm not saying all of them are good cities, I mean, there are some that have been bad apples in, you know, in different parts of the state. We've heard the stories, and then they are true a lot, you know, some of those stories are. So I'm not saying all of them are, but, you know, most time down here, we really try to help them get through. But our flexibility now is gone, because I have a 15-day window. So I don't have as much time.
I have a question, Commissioner Anderson, so it also looks like there's a little less flexibility in the fact that, that planning commission is a lot more black and white, like, we don't have any legislative political leeway, like, like, for example, the stop sign deal that we had, right? I mean, we can't say, oh, we want a whole bunch of extra stop signs just because we feel like, because we're not a legislative body. With us, it's black and white, it's like, it either meets the code or it doesn't. So it means there's, for good and bad, there's, there's less flexibility that way.
You guys are going to look at A through Y, and if it doesn't meet your collective or stat, you know, that, that's what I'm saying, is, you know, this came down because there was complaints about it, it took too long to get things through the process. I unfortunately don't know if this is the fix, you know, because there's going to be a whole lot more denials, because our flexibility's gone.
But it might give us less junk proposals too, like a lot of these preliminary plats that we've, we've seen, and they're like, oh, I forgot to do my LID, so I'll do that before city council, or I forgot to show this or that. Now it's going to be done before it comes to us, so we can make better decisions.
Perfect example, so that week that they had in between to get that in, that week's gone. Now you can table things, and you'll probably table more than you have in the past, if you want to, again, if it's one little thing and, and whatnot, and you want to see that, you're thinking, ah, that thing doesn't fit right with me, I'd rather see this or this, you can table it and give them a week to come back and do that. And I think that's what we'll see a lot, is either a lot more denials and more tables.
But it does mean that we can't just say, oh, we think it's, it's about there, we'll let it go on to city council, and they'll hash out by then, I mean, we have to actually make a decision, yes or no.
This, this won't affect PUDs though, right?
That's zoning. It's a separate council, you guys, that stuff will still stay like we've been doing. You'll recommend the PUD, council will approve PUDs. Now, a lot of PUDs are showing you what their plats are going to look like anyway, right? So the council will get to see that part of it, and if they don't like the way it's lined out, or you guys don't, you're probably going to spend a little bit more time on maybe the layout of things, because that, that's where the subdividing will come, because they have to build it to what their PUD was approved, right? So you can, and I would recommend, which I will in that time comes, spend a little more time looking at the layout of them as well.
So like, like, would they still be able to come back in and amend it? Like the, like the road today for D.R. Horton? They'd still have to, they could still come in and, and it'll just come to us and won't go to city council?
It goes back to the approving body. Okay? So if they come back and it doesn't meet the approved, like I say, if they come back to amend a final plat, and it's certain things, I'm going to say, you know, we're going to look into that, it might, what's maybe going to happen is we're going to send it back and have their preliminary plat amended, then we can meet that, then go back and then get it that way.
Will it come to us, or will you be able to just, where it's an amended final plat?
If it's minor stuff, and minor, we're going to have to, you know, talk about what that is. There's still so many things that they're going to spin this into, that we haven't come to think, oh, we didn't think about that. What, you know, and we're going to have to come up with the best that we do to fit the intent of what they're trying to do. So.
Like, like, like tonight, where they, they changed all that stuff, it wasn't, it wasn't that big of a dill, something like that.
Right, something like that, because they just changed a few, they, they added two lots or something, and if you look at it, you wouldn't even know the difference. Right, something like that because they just changed a few, they, they added two lots or something and if you look at it, you wouldn't even know in the difference. I would just say, we'll just do that staff wise.
It didn't, it didn't increase the overall lots density, it didn't do anything like that.
For the whole PCD, et cetera, yeah.
So it's, yeah, so that would speed up their time as well.
Yes, there will be things that will definitely speed up for them, if there's going to be other things.
There's some good and some bad.
Yeah.
So Drew is, is, uh, so there's a fifteen day, fifteen day time limit on review, is there a time limit on the applicant to get back to city or that's at their discretion? I know some cities have talked about having time limits both ways and some have not, so.
Yeah, all this, all this state law said was this line right in the middle. The applicant, right, I'm going right here, okay? Must respond to required corrections, that's what the state said.
Okay, but we don't have a time limit.
But now if they're holding up that fifteen day and and you put it out.
So basically it hits the fifteen day, it gets back to them and then it's on there.
That's right, I'm going to say, I'll, I'll give the applicant the choice, we're there. But you're going to agree that, hey, our fifteen days is up, but it was on me. And I'm fine with that, I think those deals can probably be made. But it's if they come back and say, nope, your twenty days are up, I'll say, well, that's, that's okay, I get where you're coming from because you're following the letter of the law. But the law also says that I can recommend denial. Well, a lot of them are interpreting it differently, I just sat with someone else today and they said, well, every time that the red lines go out, the shot clock goes back to fifteen day start. And I go, I don't think that's what the state statute said. That's right, so again, all these things put in, there's going to be a lot of hiccups with it and it's not, it's not the great, they hurried through this and they should not have hurried through it. So, but we'll see what happens.
I think that's a good idea, just leaving it, like, like, once they get their, their answer, it's on them. Because what I was saying is, if, uh, if there was a shot clock on the applicant as well and he sends it off, maybe his engineer might not even respond for fifteen days and then he's like, hey.
And what I'm going to probably try to get through for the city and we'll talk with other department heads is that we're just going to have, you're going to use our fifteen days in that four cycle. Now that may be broken up over forty-five days, right? So we reviewed it in five, we gave them a bunch of red lines, they don't come back for two weeks. I'm going to say, I've already got five, you bring it back, I'm going to take the next, it still leaves me ten business days to review your applicant, we'll see what happens. We'll probably have to sit with their city attorney and and just make sure that we're
That's, that's what I was wondering, I mean, once you, if you reviewed it in a day and and basically rejected it, what they sent, then you have fourteen more days for, after they get it back to you to keep moving forward with it. But that might be hard to keep track of.
Well, you're correct, that's not how it's written, so I mean, it's
It's, it's, it's not written at all.
Yeah, I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion now that it's been out there and they found out a lot of the things that they didn't think through. You're going to see some revisions to this and this legislative section. That they, they're going to have to because some of them are really going to hurt the developer, not help them in any way. So, okay. So basically this red area just talks about what I explained earlier, all the subdivisions that we normally see go to you. Subdivisions with three or more, that's what this red, red, you know, part talks about, we've already explained that. Again, just strikeouts, replacing words throughout the process, there is an appeal process. This is by the state as well and I just want to run through this quickly because you didn't have these in previous subdivision regulations. So just follow with me on, um, for, on item four here, appeal process for preliminary plats. Uh, disputes between the applicant and the city, the following options may be considered. For disputes relating to public improvements or engineering standards that have exhausted the fifteen days, the four review cycles. The applicant may request a review by a three person panel assembled by the municipality. The request must be submitted within ten days following the fifteen day cycle, B, here's how that is put together. For those disputes, municipality shall refer the questions to the designated appeal authority, submitted requests within ten days. So you're wondering, well, who is that authority? Well, here's what the state said is going to be that authority. It shall consist of a panel of experts, which include one licensed engineer designated by the municipality. One licensed engineer designated by the applicant and the third licensed engineer agreed upon. And, uh, and designated by the two designated engineers. So they'll come up and add that third person. They're going to say, we would recommend you have Joe engineer from certain thing and they both agree on it. Then that's the third member of that panel.
Oh, that's putting a cost on somebody.
Yes, and that's at the bottom, it says, the city, the engineer they picked, they pay his fee. The applicant pays the fee of the engineer they picked. And then the two of them split fifty fifty of the costs of the third guy that they both agreed upon to bring in. Okay, which is fair, I, I can't, I mean, at least they went and did this, it's a fair process for that. But there is an appeal process which you hadn't had before when it comes to this. These things might end up being used a lot. That's right, you had to take them to court, fifth district court and say that they're not treating me right. Okay, this way you'll go through this process on those disputes. Okay, everything else kind of stayed the same, now final plats have changed quite a bit. Um, the final plat will then, as I stated to you earlier, come to the community development department. And then the community development director will review that. And if it meets the, you know, what the preliminary plat was, that person, me, or whoever sits in my position. It says shall approve or conditionally approve. Now, if there's a little minor tweak on it that might have caused a little bit of a thing, we'll sit down with the app and say, hey, we're going to have to condition this because we know you've ran into a problem when you, you know, we're going through, whatever that may be, there's always problems that happen when they go to build subdivisions. And some of them, we just may have to put a condition on there, you'll take care of this by date, whatever. Okay, and then we'll conditionally approve it, or if it doesn't meet it and they changed the lot sizes, the streets are different, doesn't meet up with you know, only nine, it, it only covers eighty percent, there's still twenty percent was changed. Within, then that, you know, my, my seat will end up denying that and tell them they got to go get it fixed before we'll get your final plat. Now, I don't think we're going to have hardly any of those, there will be one in a blue moon that will come because they ended up changing a lot. Um, but I can't see that hardly ever happening, it's going to get denied.
I, I've heard there's a definition difference between shall and will. And any contract that I do, I always put a will in there.
In most of the codes I write, if it's that, if it's that important.
Will is absolute, that's how I've read it or heard.
Well, shall is, is absolute, shall has no, there's no option. Will, I think, that's why you don't see many wills in city codes, it's may or shall.
Well, that's, I'm just saying what I've heard, so it's all good.
But I'll stick with shall because we've used that and it, it's, it's like the, yeah. Okay, so then there's a, we have a punch list for a final plat and that's what you're going through here on this D. It is just A through, I think, uh, the letter P. It just talks about the monuments and all that stuff that you need to have on there for that final plat. We're talking about, you know, having all those, uh, um, dimensions from a, a stated section court, you know, corridor. All those things that you require, you need to have on that final plat for recording, it runs through A, A through P. Uh, which we've had again in place for a long time.
So on the three point, anyway, there on, on K, there was a question mark under public works being added to the signatures.
I, I, I changed it, I've actually included, we're going to have a city attorney, we're just going to go with the ones we had. And because it wasn't in there before, I did already change that and say, there's going to be a public works because John signs the final plat. But also the city engineer and and John's, you know, and public works signs it as well. So, and in fact, you're usually the last person, John makes sure that all the warranties are in place, everything's been done or bonded for. You know, and he's the last person that will sign generally a plat. And then, then we take it through and then it gets sent off to be recorded. So I did put that in there, that was on there and I just, I fixed it today, actually. And I added that public works will have a signature block. So the public works, city attorney, city engineer, the mayor, county, there, that's your five signature blocks. And the, and the mayor one also has attested by the city recorder, so Tara, after the mayor signs it, she attests that the mayor signs it. Saying I've witnessed him sign that plat. And then she'll put her thing on it, the date and stuff as the, as the recorder of the city. Okay. So that one's already been, good catch though, I appreciate that, Commissioner Mitchell, so that one's already been addressed, it's on. Um, again, this just talks about the review of the final plat. Again, this is where they gave them twenty days, it was not going to take that long. Um, but we'll have that done and then, again, those four review cycles, they're supposed to be used between preliminary plat and final plat. So if they exhaust their four review cycles at the preliminary plat time and they come back and their plat's not meeting, I'm just going to have to recommend denial because I don't have a review by state statute in our code. I don't have a review, I have one review cycle and if it doesn't meet it, I have to just deny it. Again, hands are being tied unintentionally.
It shouldn't make it to final plat if it doesn't have everything, anyway, it shouldn't even get a preliminary if it's not done, is what this is saying.
Stop people from submitting by state law, that's one of the things we can't. So, but that's what that, our alternative would be, we can't, we don't, we don't, again, my, the flexibility is gone. They took the flexibility away, so it's just going to have to be an automatic denial. Again, is that going to happen that often? Probably, no. But there's going to be once in a blue moon, it will happen, but again, the flexibility is gone. Okay, again, just pushing out words, cross, crossing things out, same appeal process on the final plat. Okay, they did it. Um, same review aboard, you know. And then if they, they don't like that and it comes down to it and the applicant still isn't satisfied after the review. They still have their option to take it to fifth district court, that is never taken away from them. If they feel like they were cheated or, or, you know, missed. Was, you know, there, that we weren't following the laws on them and we worked it. They will always have that right to take it to fifth district court, but they got to go through their due process. Okay, minor subdivisions aren't changing that much, other than again, you can see we're crossing out where it goes to planning commission for recommendation, going to city council for thing, you are the, the one that will approve minor. And those are finals, if you don't know that. A minor subdivision, when they bring it to you, it's a all in one, preliminary and final, all at one. But because it is part preliminary and part final, it still will run through you for that approval. Okay, lot line adjustments have always been a staff thing and they remain that way. The new law did not change that. Um, that's kind of it, there are just some things where we cross that reviewing body, again, by definitions that we had to go through in some of this other stuff. The improvements required, this is all the things that really did not change. Guarantee of improvements, we just crossed out council, it's just the city. Um, whichever body is the one that's over that. So I think that's really it. Um, if you have any questions, I know we ran through it fast, but I will also tell you that all cities were supposed to have their new subdivision ordinances in place as of six days ago. But some of them are in the process of getting them done in this month as well. So. So what I'm trying to tell you is I hope you don't think you want to table it and read through it some more because we're, it's going to city council next, next week. That's right.
So you're looking for a motion, is that what you're saying?
Well, you can have, I don't know if there's anything you want to ask, I think, I'm, I'm trying to keep it very simple, our subdivision process really isn't changing. It's just the people that are going to see it and who gives the approval of it now. And it's been condensed. That's, I, I can't, you know, I've tried to, people say, well, what's the big change? I said, well, really, the big change is, is they basically, the state legislators took the city council off, off of, you know, the process. Is what they basically did, now it's just been brought forward.
Review, did he review this?
Yes. Public Works has reviewed this, all, you know, the, the main departments, Public Works, my department, city attorney. We're the main three that deal with the subdivision process, we've all looked at it, had our input on it. Again, it really hasn't changed a lot, right? It's just who sees what at what time. And that's the way I wanted to keep it, because we're still just doing it the way we used to, it's just that there's not an extra meeting.
Is this a public hearing?
What's that?
Is this a public hearing?
This is a public hearing. I'd like to open up our public hearing, anybody like to make any comments? Come on, don't be shy. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Turn back over to the commissioners for comments, a motion.
Looks good to me, I mean.
What's that?
That's more work on us, basically. That's fine.
Well, you have the same amount of work, it's just now you're going to take your work. You get to take it a little more seriously, right? You don't have, like, like Commissioner Anderson said, that, that freedom sometimes, right? That, that you took, you, you were able to take, that, that freedom's not there anymore. Yeah, you'll just have to, you know, know that you're the ones and you, you will have that and but you guys have been involved in it, it's not like anything, but you're just going to, and we're going to make sure upfront, there's going to be more more will be required upfront than it used to because of this. And it'll just have to because we don't have the flexibilities. And I, I, I know I say that word, but I can't think of a better word. That we don't, you know, we, our flexibility has been taken from us. To be more, you know, workable because of time limits that have been put on it.
And basically the state's making us do this. I mean, unless we decided to make the recommending body city council.
Can't do that.
But you can't do city council.
That's one thing they were bold about, that the city council cannot be that, that reviewing body.
And it seemed like when we went to that little meeting, the motivation behind this was to try to speed up the process in favor of the developer. Which does, yeah, may or may not, we kind of talked about that.
Well, there were, I mean, at the meeting and at others, I've heard that the two main motivations on, from both sides were speed up the time of approvals, but on the other side, to also encourage better submissions, um, from the outset. So I think it probably, eventually I think that's what it'll lead to.
Yeah, to just be honest and it's, I'm just trying to speak of what, what we've seen is that there's been so much work out there that, that on the creators of them, it's been tough, you know, so it's been backed up on them as much. And it's only because, again, everything's been going crazy here, right? And so there's just so much work and there's only so many engineering companies, you know, especially down here and even up north. And so it's been backlogged with them, but we're the ones that the finger gets pointed at.
Just for instance, just like what happened tonight. Uh, and I'm just going to use it as an example and I'm sorry, but, uh, D R Horton comes in, we look at it, we like that extra landscape or whatever. So they can come back and do an amendment? Okay. Right, okay.
Yeah, because you were the approving body of it, it'll come back to you for the amendment.
But I'm going to say it was a sexy deal and I liked it and now they want to take it away. Can't do it, okay. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just blunt, but.
No, but that's, that's what we're, you know, that's kind of what the, the hidden tiger in the room is, right? Is that when you put all these things in place and you're trying to be very streamlined. What it does when you take away the, the freedoms of being a little bit more here to, you know, work and negotiate, the negotiation time's gone. Because you're on a timeframe, so you
And again, it also just means there's no legislative leeway because people in the audience are like, oh, I, I really want these five stop signs right here. It doesn't matter because it's not in the code, so.
Or the twenty-five foot.
Yeah. Because we can't say, okay, city council can decide if they want to do that or not, I mean, because with us, we don't have the authority to say you can do that, so we just say no.
Well, some things you will, believe it or not, and we'll, we'll get those narrow down.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's got to be something that
But some of these special features, I, if I'm you guys, I wouldn't touch them with a ten foot pole. So. Whatever those odd, odd things that may come in, so. Yep. Did you, did nobody come up, nobody want?
No, nobody came up, I'm going to close that public hearing again.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve or to amend a portion of the city code, more specifically title ten subdivision regulations as outlined by staff. And send it to city council for consideration.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Mitchell to uh, for the consideration or recommendation to the city council for a code amendment of title ten. Uh, individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Shill is an aye, this will This will move forward to the City Council on Valentine's Day. Director? Okay, the next public hearing is for consideration, it's item number 8B. It's a public hearing also for consideration and recommendations to the City Council for a general plan amendment G-24-01. Amend the, and amend the moderate income housing element of the general plan to adopt strategy M. Drew, not Drew, Ellen will turn the time over to you.
Thank you. In 2022, House Bill 462 changed the reporting requirements for moderate income housing report. In that, our city is required to implement a minimum of three strategies, which they allowed us to choose those three strategies. Strategy one in our plan is phasing out, which we'll discuss on the, the next agenda item. And with that, we need to implement another strategy to stay in compliance with the state requirements. So we're proposing, I'm proposing that we adopt strategy M from the state, which states that we will demonstrate creation of or participation in a community land trust program for moderate income housing. I'll briefly kind of describe our goals and objectives here of how we're going to accomplish that. This strategy is two-pronged, with the first step being associating ourselves with like-minded individuals who actively engage in housing affordability conversations, workshops, and seminars, such as the Housing Action Coalition of the county. Participate in their meetings and discussions. The Southwest Utah Community Land Trust coordinates their efforts and is partnered with the Housing Action Coalition. So by going to those meetings, we're, we're not only furthering that mission, but we're partnering with the land trust. The second prong, we will participate with the Southwest Utah Community Land Trust by attending their board meetings. We'll also maintain collaborative efforts with the land trust in obtaining land for moderate income housing and funding to be used in this regard. The measures of success for this come in the form of increased community member attendance at the annual hack conference to grow the Housing Action Coalition and Southwest Utah Community Land Trust in their operating procedures. Increased discussions with developers for participating in community land trust and then collaborate with developers, land trust, and city staff in providing moderate income Just, I'll go off topic here for a minute, but, you know, there's several components to, to bring in and offer affordable or moderate income housing. And this, what we're proposing isn't by all means the fix to the program, the program, but it's, it could be one small component or a stepping stone for a homeowner to, to eventually get into homeownership and a way out of renting. Governor Cox, a few weeks ago, he rolled out his Utah First Homes Program and identified several steps and dollar amounts that he's going to contribute. I want to just briefly mention those. He announced Steve Waldrop as the Housing Innovation Advisor, who's going to oversee the program. $50 million in first-time home buyer assistance, $75 million in state infrastructure, bank expansion for housing, $5 million towards starter home innovation fund, $15 million into sweat equity, and then $5 million into the community land trust expansion. So we'd kind of like to tap into that community land trust as well, which the governor's proposing that there's some options there and, and team up and chip away at the affordable housing. Again, this, this is not the solution to provide affordable housing, but an option that could be good, a stepping stone for some. And I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have at this time.
So Ellen, this is Commissioner Anderson. So, so does this mean, it says the current, the current, you know, housing plan and proposed changes are strategy E, F, and H? Does that mean we're no longer doing those and we're replacing it with this M?
So tho, those are currently in place. That's a great point. We have scratched out a few timeline components to those existing strategies to better fit our submission timeline.
So do those strategies stay in place, they're just getting amended with different timelines and then M is getting added to it?
Correct, yes. And then strategy one, which is the next agenda item, is going to be phasing out here. So this, this adoption will allow us to maintain.
And that's because we've already done that, right? Because we've already done all the, the ADU revisions and stuff this past year.
Correct. So again, just to maintain our state requirements, being in compliance with them, we need a minimum of, of three strategies and this is, this is the strategy, this, this one's the winner.
I guess my only comment would be just that, I mean, I'm glad we're not getting rid of all the others, you know, putting an actual timeline, which is good, but, I mean, I, I've been on, I've been on the, the hack coalition, I've been on the Land Use Trust Committee and various others for years and years and you, you don't, you're not going to get a lot of traction out of strategy, out of this, M, it just, it's mostly a lot of talk and you know that, I mean, you've been to those meetings. I think the other ones that we've still got in place are where we're going to see the most, you know, benefit out of. So just saying from having attended those meetings for a long, long time.
Yeah, tho, those are great comments. We've had a few preliminary discussions with, with some developers. You know, the land trust thing is, hasn't really took, taken root here. We're, we're hoping to kind of, you know, kick this off, see how it goes and, and hopefully do a few lots, see how it works out.
And to add on that, the state's going to start throwing more money that way too, and so it hopefully will take a little more traction. Yet those options are going to become, I think, more looked at as, as viable instead of just going through the motions, right? Because of where we're at, so.
Yeah, Governor Cox, he, he specified $5 million towards the community land trust expansion.
Let's open this for a public hearing. And so I'd like to open for a public hearing. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you. My name's Don Bean, a resident of Washington City and also work for D.R. Horton. In a couple of weeks, we are actually going to make another presentation to you where we would like to participate in this event, where, I don't know if I would need to give the details, but I do think that you should know that we are a willing participant to help meet some of the needs of the affordable housing. D.R. Horton believes that it can be solved through many different ways. I personally believe that it's a supply and demand issue, we just need to provide more supply to meet the current demand. I think that's the best way, but between now and then, we need to do some other things that are a little more creative. And I think we can help out in that and donate a few lots to help make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll close the public hearing and turn back to the commissioners for comments, motion?
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve G-24-01 to amend the modern income housing element of the general plan to adopt strategy M, which states the demonstration creation of or participation in a community land trust program for moderate income housing and send it to City Council.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Mitchell for item We'll go to individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Shiel, I'm also an aye, that will pass and, and go to the City Council on Valentine's Day. Item number 8C is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for a code amendment of Title IX, Chapter 8A, subsection 8B6 and Chapter 8B subsection 7B6, to amend the detached accessory dwelling unit parking requirements for the required two parking spaces to one required parking space. And turn the time over to Ellen for comments.
Thank you, commissioners. So this process right here, this amendment is fulfilling strategy one of the previous item, that moderate income housing. So we're kind of checking that box. The state's going to say, yay, Washington City, you, you did this, you're in compliance, you know, you're working towards, towards those goals. So we're proposing to change code for Title IX, Chapter 8A, subsection 8B6 and Chapter 8B subsection 7B6. Basically just to remove that there's two parking stalls required down to one parking stall. Don't see any huge red flags with this. All of the lots that do accessory dwelling units need to be 10,000 square feet in size, so they're a little bit bigger lots, they have the room, most of them, to my knowledge, have the, the parking there to provide two stalls anyways.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys.
Any questions?
So before you had to have two stalls for the accessory dwelling unit? Oh, yeah.
So, the primary resident is required to have two, you add an additional if you do an accessory dwelling, so you have three, minimum of three.
We welcome you up. No public comments, I'll close this public hearing, turn it back to commissioners for a motion or further comments.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve the amend detached accessory dwelling unit parking requirement from the required two parking spaces to the one required parking space and send it to City Council.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, a second by Commissioner Anderson for item 8C. Individual voting, Anderson.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
I'm Shiel, I'm also an aye, and that passes unanimously and will go to City Council on Valentine's Day. I think that's the extent of our meeting. I missed my bonus tonight, but it's all good, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson, I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Bullock, I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.